For a snowflake soiree dance to be held on January 19th, 2019, at the Sally Blair Ames Sports Complex Fieldhouse, 320 Washington Street, Easton, Mass. From 9:00 PM to 1:00 AM, an Eastern Police Detail is not required for this event. Any questions? Someone like to make a motion?
So moved. Second?
All in favor? Unanimous. Great. The next item that we have is acceptance of a gift from Full and Waterproofing and Construction Company, a donation to the Eastern Police Department.
Sure. So attached in your packet, the board will find a memo from Police Chief Gary Sullivan, who was not able to make it tonight to speak to this item. A local business, Full and Waterproofing and Construction Company, has donated $1,000 to the town specifically. The police chief is requesting that, should the board vote to accept this gift, that the money be deposited in a police donation account for future use by the department. A letter of thanks was prepared by the chief to Full and Waterproofing. The town is grateful for their generosity.
So, we need to make a motion to accept this gift. Would somebody like to make the motion?
I make a motion, we accept the gift.
I'll second that.
So, that's Chuck and Tom, all in favor? Unanimous. Great. And we thank Full and Waterproofing for that very generous gift. The next up is Planning and Zoning Board Interviews. So we have an opening on the Planning and Zoning Board. Just to briefly say, "The mission of the Planning and Zoning Board is to promote development which integrates environmental protection and community economic goals, and furthers the welfare of people and the community by creating convenient, equitable, healthful, efficient, and attractive environments for present and future generations. The Planning and Zoning Board is responsible for preparing a comprehensive master plan, proposing, reviewing, holding hearings, and making recommendations on zoning bylaw changes, reviewing and acting on subdivisions, preliminary and definitive plans, reviewing and signing approval-not-required plans, acting as special permit granting authority, reviewing and acting on site plan reviews, and approvals as set forth in the Town of Easton zoning regulations." The board consists of five members and an alternate appointed by the Board of Selectmen. So we do have one applicant tonight, and let's find this. Chris Anderson, if you want to come up and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in a seat on the planning board.
Sure. My name's Chris Anderson. I recently moved to Easton last November. I have a strong architectural and engineering background. I got my master's degree in Roger Williams University. And throughout my career, I've done a lot of planning for various jobs, some in Connecticut and more recently Massachusetts and Boston. One of the reasons I moved to this town was because of the attraction I've had to this location. A lot of my family grew up in the Taunton area, and I think this town really fits where I'd like to raise a family. So that's one of the reasons I picked this town. And one of the reasons I want to work or volunteer for here is because I think giving back to the community is an important role in someone's character, and I think doing it in something that I have a lot of knowledge in would benefit everyone as well as myself.
Excellent. And do you know the time commitment? Have you talked to anybody about that?
Yeah, I understand roughly how much time it will be.
Okay. Great. Any questions from the board? So I also want to mention, before we move on, that we did have another applicant, Charlie Mallow, who currently serves as the alternate on that committee. He sent us an email, and I spoke with him this afternoon. He was withdrawing his application for that, so we only have one applicant. And so I would entertain a motion to appoint Chris Anderson to the role on the planning board.
And he doesn't know that this is ending June 30th of this year, right?
Uh, I think you-
Right, June 30th, 2019.
Just for the record.
Yeah, correct.
Yes. So, thank you, Chuck. I appreciate that. So we'll take a motion, a second, and a roll call vote.
So moved. I recommend Chris Anderson for this position.
Second? King, Anderson?
Broussard, Anderson. Vargier, Anderson.
Full Janetti, Anderson.
Mills, Anderson.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thanks for applying. Appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate it, guys.
And the town clerk will be in touch with you with what you have to do to get sworn in.
Okay.
And you're off and running.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
All right, good night.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have an acceptance of an easement at 568 Foundry Street.
Sure. Thank you. In your packet, you'll find a memo submitted by the Director of Planning and Economic Development, Stephanie Danielson, regarding a permanent easement that is over a small piece of land on Foundry Street. This easement is related to the forthcoming Five Corners Phase II Sewer Construction Project. This easement is necessary in order to move that project forward. It is for consideration of $1. Town Council has reviewed the attached deed as to form. I recommend that the board vote to accept this easement, and if you have any detailed questions, Director Danielson is here.
Any questions?
This is right across the street from the used car lot on Foundry Street.
Correct. Yeah, effectively.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
Would somebody like to make a motion to grant the easement or to accept the grant of easement?
To accept the easement.
To accept the easement.
So moved. Second?
All in favor? Unanimous. Great. Thank you. Do we all have to sign that tonight, or?
Yes, and your signatures will be notarized.
Okay, so everyone make sure to stick around for that at the end of the meeting.
I think this is on you.
Oh, okay.
I apologize.
Okay, great. Next up, the Department of Public Works' update Northeastern Village Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Sure. While Director Field and Joe Shea get situated, I'll just do a brief introduction of this topic. Director of Public Works, Dave Field, and numerous engineers, Woodard and Curran, are present tonight to provide the board, the public, an update on a leak of the Northeastern Village Wastewater Treatment Plant. As the board is aware, the town became aware of a leak on December 4th, 2018, and this was contained within 24 hours of notice by taking a tank that did have a leak offline. The necessary notifications were given to the Department of Environmental Protection on the state level, the EPA on the federal level, and the Eastern Board of Health. Our office was also in communication directly with the selectmen at that time. A complete investigation led by DPW began at that time, which included water quality testing of the Shovel Shop Pond and Queesit Brook, the pumping, cleaning, and visual inspection of the sewer tank in question, and continued further inspection and evaluation of the tank to determine what the cause of this leak was, and to begin to identify what the necessary steps will be to make sure that this doesn't happen again in the future. It's important to continue to note that Shovel Shop Pond, which is where a portion of this leak ran off into, is not a source of public water supply for the town, and that this was not a risk to the town's drinking water or a public health risk. Nonetheless, it's not something that we want to see happen, and in the interest of transparency and forthrightness, we have a detailed presentation for the board tonight.
Thank you, Connor.
Take it away, David.
Thank you. Good evening. Dave Field, Director of Public Works. With me is Joe Shea from Woodard and Curran. So basically, I want to give you a real, a brief introduction of what happened, the timelines, the immediate actions that we took, and remedial remedies. Then we're going to get into long-term actions and remedies, and we can handle any questions or any comments you have after that. So moving on, on December 4th, the DPW was contacted about a potential sewage leak at an outfall at Shovel Shop Pond at the intersection of Pond Street and Mechanic Street. The call actually came in on the 3rd, and DPW was notified on the 4th. As soon as we saw that, the Assistant Town Engineer was out there, saw the, witnessed the evidence of sewage. I was contacted. We immediately went down to the wastewater treatment plant and determined that there was a leak in one of the tanks downstream. It was leaking into a sewer manhole. So we immediately engaged the wastewater treatment plant operator, and we took that tank offline. And then we moved to inform the necessary regulatory parties. We called DEP verbally and EPA. On December 6th and 7th, we performed some water quality testing and disinfected and cleaned the drain lines leading to the pond. And then going forward, December 10th and 12th, the tank was fully emptied and cleaned for an investigation. At that time, there was suspected seams in the tank, and we'll explain a little bit more about that and why we suspected that going on. We identified four seams that looked like it was possible that there could have been a leak, but there was no, obviously, smoking gun here that led us to believe those seams were the issue. And then on the 12th to the 21st, we engaged Woodard and Curran, and they went through and pulled all their records from the tank manufacturer and the design. They also contacted the tank manufacturer and installer and put them on notice about the leak. And then on January 3rd, which was last week, we actually had structural engineers from Woodard and Curran and from Knowles Industrial Services, which is a tank contractor, empty, enter the tank and give us some recommendations, and we're waiting on that final report now.
Take it from here.
Yes, yeah, sure.
So looking at exactly what happened, we've got some, a graphic to display. I'm sure most people are very well familiar with this area, but just to orient anybody who might be watching at home, this is a drone view of Ames Shovel Shop, a nice fall seasonal view. Main Street is here in the front. Oliver Street is towards the back. Hidden in that beautiful foliage is Mechanic Street and the railroad tracks. And then Shovel Shop Pond is towards the back. The tank that was found to be leaking is located here, along the Long Shop next to building number four. And when we talk about not only where did it happen, but we looked into exactly what happened, what happened is a buried tank had an underground leak in the mound adjacent to the large gear wheel you see when you drive by. And that leak of wastewater migrated out in all directions. However, a portion of it, of that liquid migrated and then worked its way into a drain manhole located here, right near the number four on the building when you drive by or as you enter into Ames Shovel Works. Once it had entered into the drainage system, it eventually flowed down the drainage pipe, and it discharged the liquid into Shovel Shop Pond here at the Mechanic Street-Pond Street area, where there's a swale, where catch basins and drainage from the area enter the pond. Trying to look at a graphic of what happened is if you could picture taking a knife and cutting into the ground as if it were a birthday cake, and you would look inside the birthday cake. This is a graphic of if you cut into the ground in front of the Long Shop in building number four. There was a septic tank that's part of the treatment facility. We call it an influent tank. And somewhere in that tank, there was a leak. That leak migrated out into the ground. The volume was estimated based upon the amount of liquid that left the tank. A portion of that liquid migrated into the drain manhole about 70 feet away, and at that point, the drain system carried that liquid to Shovel Shop Pond. So when we talk about a sanitary sewer overflow, which is the technically correct term or the regulatory correct term, this was not an overflow at all. Nothing came out of the top of the tank. This was a leak coming from within the tank, migrating through the ground, entering in another structure, and then eventually daylighting at Shovel Shop Pond. So there's a nuance there, because when people hear of a sanitary sewer overflow, they understand what an overflow is. It's the term we must use. However, it was a leak, similar to a water main leak or a irrigation system leak. It goes into the ground, and it conceals itself until it daylights somewhere. Unfortunately, and in this case, very disappointingly, it daylighted at Shovel Shop Pond. To go into a little more detail on the timeline that David had presented, the initial email had come in December 3rd at 4:39 PM, and that email reported some cloudy liquids and an odor at Shovel Shop Pond. That email was responded to by the staff who received it at 4:56. And then, first thing in the morning on December 4th, that staff investigated Ames Shovel Works Pond and confirmed the smell, immediately called Easton's DPW. The DPW came out, and at around 11:00 AM, they were able to investigate the discharge, the upstream drainage system, basically try to chase back the liquid and the odor. They tried to find the source. At 11:30, field testing confirmed that ammonia was present in the water. Not only was there a smell and an off-colored liquid, but now there was technical information available through field testing. Ammonia does not exist normally in groundwater or in drainage. So the confirmation that this was wastewater or there was some other problem had occurred. By 12:45, through the investigation of manually opening tanks and vaults and effectively chasing that liquid upstream or backwards, was determined that there must be a leak somewhere between eight and 12 feet underground from that tank that I had already pointed out to you. By 1:00 PM, that tank had been isolated to prevent any new sewage from coming into it. Other tanks and vaults had been tested to confirm that they were not leaking. And by 1:30 PM, the suspected tank was now confirmed to be the source of the SSO. It was isolated. The level was no longer dropping. So from a regulatory standpoint, the SSO was terminated. That was the end of the SSO flow. There was still a number of tasks to occur. So from 4:30-ish on the night before with an email to 1:30 the following day, the issue had been ceased. In the afternoon on the 4th, the drainage system was treated with chlorine tablets and pumping trucks were ordered, wash-down equipment was ordered. And early on December 5th, the leaking tanks were pumped out, the leaking tank was pumped out in wash-down. Also in the morning on the 5th, there were confirmatory measurements again to reconfirm that other tanks were not leaking. There was a search for new odors. These septic tanks or storage tanks, some of them are designed to go up and down, fill and drop, so they're constantly in motion, finding leaks within them. Requires you to stop your process for a period of time and make sure that they do not drop. Others of the tanks, such as the one that leaked, normally maintain a similar level. They're equalization tanks, so they're almost always at a consistent level. So finding a drop in those tanks is quite rare, and when you open the tank, you can see it. On the morning of the 5th, plant flow records were reviewed, again, because every day, a different volume of wastewater comes into this plant, and the levels in tanks go up and down. All of the data was regressed, and the plant operator estimated that 25,000 gallons of sewage had leaked out of the tank and into the ground. Looking at the flow data, it appeared to have started on Saturday, December 1st, and then again was ceased on December 4th. That estimate of 25,000 gallons is what actually flowed out of the holding tank based upon level calculations. We don't know, and we can't calculate, how, what portion of that migrated into the drainage system. Certainly is a number less than 25,000, but there's no way to calculate how much of it actually reached the drainage system or actually reached Shovel Shop Pond. So the conservative approach is to use the number that could be calculated, which is 25,000 gallons per day. Once that volume was determined, there was confidence in the source, there was confidence there was no other source. Remedies for sanitation had already began. In accordance with the town's wastewater operations permit, the Mass DEP, the EPA, and the Eastern Board of Health were notified of a sanitary sewer overflow. Again, that's the regulatory term, is a sanitary sewer overflow. This was a sanitary sewer leak and migration. However, that form was submitted to the DEP midday on the 5th. Also, as part of the activities, while there was cleaning and sanitation going on, while there were chlorine tablets being used, while there were tanks being pumped down, the town on the 7th did some Shovel Shop Pond water quality sampling. This slide gets a little bit technical, so I'm going to go a little technical for a moment. But the town sampled for E. coli, which is the top table, and for biochemical oxygen demand. Very technical term, but biochemical oxygen demand is a term used to measure the quality of different waste waters. As water becomes cleaner, it has less demand for oxygen. So if you look at the top table, at three locations, on the 7th, Shovel Shop Pond was sampled for E. coli. It was sampled at the drainage outfall off Mechanic Street, basically the location of the odor and the cloudy water. It was sampled mid-pond along the shoreline, and it was sampled at the spillway to the lagoon. To the right of the E. coli information, for the purposes of comparison, we've added in a column that after wastewater goes through a wastewater treatment plant, we've listed the typical number or limit for fecal coliform, which E. coli and fecal coliform are not exactly the same thing, but these were the numbers we had available to us. So we're considering them, for this purpose, a proxy to each other. And the point of that top table is that the red number, 24,019.6, is frustrating. We do not like to see numbers like that in our water bodies. However, the other two blue numbers actually are not that high. They do meet Class B bathing and residential standards according to the Mass DEP. So it was only the red number that confirmed to us that we had sewage leaking into the water from a technical standpoint. There was a smell. There certainly was suspicion. But as you moved away from the discharge point, Shovel Shop Pond's water became very typical or very standard for the background of the typical water that's there. And then no way is that to minimize what happened. We're unhappy with that red number. We're unhappy with the situation. We do want to make it clear that Shovel Shop Pond's water quality was impacted in one location with E. coli, and the other locations that were sampled did not find that impact. With biochemical oxygen demand, again, a very technical component, you can also see the results where 30 is the industry standard for treatment. So there was one location slightly above 30, and the other two locations well below 30. So these results are what we will also be reporting to the regulators. We wanted to make sure they were clear, and as we go through this presentation, we're happy to answer further questions about them. The water quality results, we know this is a very important element. As this process moved through, another technically, technical element was the notification and follow-up with the regulators, the filing of that sanitary sewer overflow form. There's some details up on this slide as to what that process is. We have been preparing a summary report that's still in draft form as we await some of the structural engineer information. We will be documenting all of this, but the SSO form went into the DEP, the EPA, and the Eastern Health Department midday on December 5th. One of the things that often happens when we go through these processes is an SSO is found, the report is filed, and a number of activities occur after the report to clean, sanitize, monitor, and determine what's going on. Kind of do those as quickly and expeditiously as possible. Because we're not notifying the DEP on a daily basis, that's absolutely not required. I don't want anybody to have the sense that nothing happened. The operator was out there, our staff was out there, town staff was out there, making sure we're accumulating all of the appropriate pieces of information and making the system safe to go into those empty underground tanks to evaluate them and monitor Shovel Shop Pond to ensure that truly we had ceased the flow or a leak, of a leak. For a little more clarity, I'm going to become less technical now. Thank you for enduring those slides. These are some of the construction photos. This tank that leaked is called a tunnel tank, and it's built out of six different concrete sections. You can see the concrete sections. You can get a sense of the size of the tank. 12 feet wide, 12 feet deep, 10 feet wide, about 40 feet long, when you look at the size of the construction workers either standing on it or near the tank. This is now a nicely shaped mound covered with grass. You would not know these were underneath, which is completely intentional. Had there been an overflow and the wastewater had come out of the top of the tank, it would have been found immediately. But again, the sanitary sewer overflow was a leak somewhere lower in the tank, about eight to 12 feet, buried under the ground. And what leaked, we were able to determine after entering the tank, is when these concrete sections come together, they have these joints where the pieces butt each other. They're shiplapped, so there is an overlap, and there is a sealant that's put over the top or over the joint. But in four locations, that sealant appears, or in three locations, it is buckled. In one location, the ship lap seems to have shifted a little bit. So part of the repairs or long-term repairs are going to be addressing all of those locations. But as we talk about the leak underground and exactly what happened, one of these joints, or up to four of these joints, we think it may have just been one leaked underground. And it gives you more of a sense of what that tank is and where the leak came from. This graphic, this photo may be difficult to see, but this photo is of one of the seams that buckled. Normally, this would be a nice, smooth, black surface. You wouldn't even know there was a joint behind there. So when we entered the tank, we were able to see where a seam had buckled off, an indication that either groundwater heaved in or something occurred. We're not, we're honestly not fully sure what occurred, but we're working on a remedy so it doesn't occur again. And the structural engineer who entered the tank with his team on January 3rd right now has given us a verbal that they're considering three different options or an all-of-the-above type approach to the repair. It's very important that we put on some type of belt and suspenders recommendation for these repairs. We don't want this to happen again. This is frustrating, and this is disappointing, only being five years into these tanks' operations. But we want to make sure that the repair holds and that it is a belt and suspenders approach. A couple other matters that we're looking into are some operational changes within the wastewater treatment facility. The wastewater treatment facility has about 140 different items that it monitors or alarms. It monitors for all the usual suspects. It monitors for every possible overflow. Again, the sanitary sewer overflow was not an overflow. It was a leak. So one of the things that we're looking into is potentially adjusting or recommending the town consider adjusting some of the programming and adding into the SCADA system a method of monitoring for leaks. Meaning if this graphic here is a screenshot of your current facility, the vertical lines are when a pump turns on. The blue line is liquid in an effluent tank. So as liquid fills the effluent tank, the pump turns on and it drops down. And then as liquid fills the tank, the pump turns on and it drops down. And then you get to this overnight period where people are not flushing toilets, taking showers, or creating sewage. showers, or creating sewage. So the tank fills very slowly overnight, and then in the morning, the process starts again. If this blue line were to actually drop instead of go up as it moves to the right, that would be indicative of a leak or some type of problem. The influent tanks are monitored right now solely for overflow. So as liquid was dropping, there was not a monitoring mechanism in place to, to track a slow leak. So it's an example of one of the recommendations we're giving for consideration. Some of the next steps with where we are right now at this moment is to continue to work with the structural engineer to get their recommendations, work with the town and the board on implementation. Considering those operational adjustments, we will be finalizing and submitting a summary report to the, to the DEP, the EPA, and the Health Department for closing out the SSO from a regulatory standpoint. Certainly will be shared with, with the board and appropriate town departments concerning what, what happened, what the short-term or immediate remedies were, and what the long-term repairs are for this situation. And with that, David and I would like to answer any questions or open.
Sure. I'll let the board start. Do you have some specific questions to start off?
I got a, I have a question. I have a couple of questions. Thank you for coming and clarifying, it was a good presentation. The source of the leak, is that, is that just a theory right now, or you, have you pretty much locked on to that's exactly what happened?
We've locked on with that's exactly what happened. As we entered the tank and found those four locations with buckled seams, and having known that tank dropped when it, the level should not have dropped when it wasn't being pumped, that wastewater was escaping, the other tanks viewed did not drop when they were monitored.
When that tank was taken offline, the leak ceased.
So is that particular tank always full, just from the nature of, of the system? Is that tank typically filled, what is it, 28,000 gallons? Is that always generally filled and then it kind of works its way through to the, to the leaching field?
Yeah, it shouldn't go below its, its outlet elevation. So when the operator opened the cover and saw that it was below that outlet elevation, we knew we had a problem right there.
How, how does that system, and I don't, I don't know a lot about this stuff, but how does that system, say we have a, some sort of a rain event, like a heavy rain event, say a 100-year storm, and the system overflows with water, how does, how does that system deal with some sort of an overflow from, from rain, from heavy rain?
Well, the, as the water comes in, it's actually pushed into the, the plant as needed as those levels rise, so that it's taken into the plant and treated and then discharged.
Okay.
So as, in low-flow times, like overnight, there may not be any action, there's very little inflow coming in, and there's little going into the plant. But the plant is capable of accepting 56,000 gallons per day into the plant to treat it and discharge clean effluent.
Right.
So as, as water, sewage, anything comes in, it's treated.
Okay. Now, what about the, now is that, that's not a combined system, right, it's between?
No. It's a separate storm, separate sewer system, yes.
So how, how big are the, the chambers that the stormwater, because again, I've, I've seen them, they, they're these round cylinders, and then the stormwater basically runs from chamber to chamber and eventually makes it to the pond. How, how, how deep is that sys, that, that stormwater system?
So then that's a completely separate system, that's actually a private stormwater system, but it's very similar to stormwater systems that we have all throughout town.
Right.
I believe the drain manholes in that area are probably about six feet down, six or seven feet down. And they accept, you know, catch basins bring in water from parking lots or roof drains, and it's conveyed pipe to pipe until it gets to Shovel Shop Pond.
Okay. Now, I mean, if that, if the, those chambers are only six feet down, and I'm, I'm sure you get a whole series of very smart people working on it, and I hope we come up with a solution. Are you guys pretty certain that somehow or another, the, the sewage went from the 28,000 gallon tank that was 12 feet down and somehow or another made it into that particular cylinder? Or is it, you're kind of working on a?
No, we, we, it's a direct correlation. So the drain manhole's only about six feet deep, but it's at a lower elevation. The surface of that is at a much lower elevation than the tank is in the system. So I don't have a, a picture for you per se, but I think we do have a graphic.
I think it's, it's worth noting that.
Shows that.
I had asked to have the board, as you know, go out on Friday to do an actual tour. And I think when you're onsite and you see it, some of these questions.
No, I mean, I, I drove around there, I mean, it's not, I don't, I don't feel like I'm like driving to like the bottom of a hill or anything, it's, you know, I, it's definitely a great difference, but I don't, we're talking six to, you know, eight to 12 feet down on, on the main tank. I mean, it's, you know, I'm just kind of curious, I just, I think what I'm getting at is, I just want to make sure that we're, we're, I mean, it's underground, so we're kind of trying to come up with some sort of a theory. I just want to make sure we're getting it so we don't have this problem.
No, exactly, and your question's a good question. But the elevation, this, this graphic is just showing a simple graphic, but the drain manhole is, I'd say, five to six feet lower in elevation, surface elevation than the tanks are.
Right.
And so those tanks are, are, are large, but the, the elevation of those tanks is still higher than the bottom of that drain line.
So how did the material get from, because those are chambers, are, those are cement chambers, right? There's not, there's not like, there's, it's not like the stormwater drains in from on the, on the side, how do they?
That, the, the manhole in question's a drain manhole, and it, and it works to convey and is an inspection point for multiple pipe connections. So there's a pipe that comes in and a pipe that goes out.
Okay.
Drain manholes are not necessarily watertight.
Right.
So a sewer system, everything's made watertight and tested. On a drain manhole, those, those connections are cemented up, but they're not tested for watertightness. It's generally not a big problem if they leak a little. So in this case, if you look at the graphic here, there was sewage leaking out of the tank, and it was migrating downward.
Right.
Down gradient, and a small portion of that into, you know, where intercepted that drain manhole leaked into, basically a, a small leak between the pipe connection and the, the concrete cylinder of the drain manhole. It was basically like a straw worth coming through. So when we opened that drain manhole, we saw water entering, and we could smell sewage, and it was directly upstream of the, the issue on Pond and Mechanic.
Okay.
So right then, we knew we had an issue potentially with the tanks in front of us.
Yeah.
So when we looked at it, then we all opened the tank, we saw the level dropped, we immediately knew that that was not right, we took that tank offline, the leak stopped. So that's, that's why we know that that's our issue, and it's still, that leak has stopped, there's been no other, no further issues at the pond, we've stopped it, we've identified that tank as the issue.
Okay, great. And the last question, is there, is there some sort of protocols in place on, on who we contact if, if, God forbid this happens again, is there, is there like a sequence of events that happens as far as like who you contact and who you report it to and et cetera?
Yes, there is. I, you want to?
Go back to that slide. So from a regulatory standpoint, the sanitary sewer overflow form must go to the Mass DEP, the EPA, and the local health department.
Okay.
Then there are some other, that's, that's the requirement. There, there are other departments or agencies depending upon the size and the magnitude of the overflow. If you're adjacent to a, if you're on the coast and you're adjacent to a shell fishing bed, for example, that's another trigger.
Right.
Not, not applicable here. But these are the three regulatorily required agencies to notify.
Okay. And then last question, it's probably an easy one. Do we have some sort of an alarm system that would notify the, the person running the plant at the time that materials have gotten down, we have some sort of a problem? Is there something in place, or is there something we could put in place if we don't have that?
Yeah, so I, as, as Joe described earlier, there is no alarm for low level right now for those tanks, but it's something that we could add if that's what we saw fit to do, that would trend that tank elevation so it would, would alarm us. But there are about, what, 140 alarms on this plant already? It's monitored remotely. If there's any issues with those, those items, the operator is notified. This is not something that normally happens, so that's why it's generally not built in. Have you seen any plants that you've designed with that type of alarm?
We have not, this is a lesson learned for us. We, we alarm and monitor for all the usual suspects. I've described this as an unusual suspect, it's unfortunate.
Okay.
But there are, there are ways or recommendations that we're making on to prevent this from happening again, because we found a, a suspect or a problem.
All right, that sounds good.
And part of this in the timeline is that this happened over a weekend, and the plant operator is there about 30 hours during the week, so, you know, by the time we were notified, he was already on board with that, but that's, you know, if this had happened in the middle of the week, it may not have taken so long because he would have been onsite.
Now, given that, if I could, I'd just like to say, express some appreciation, first of all, for your time, it's a shame, it's a field, and your efforts on this and the presentation today, because I think it's a very important matter for the town of Easton. Not only do we all take drinking water very seriously, but we certainly here in the town of Easton pride ourselves in our conservation efforts, and the environment is very important to our constituents. So I appreciate the diligence with which you prepared this presentation, and certainly the preparation of the walkthrough that many of us were able to take on Friday was highly informative and greatly appreciated, really added context that is shown on these slides but is even more present when you're there to see it live. I certainly want to express appreciation to the community for acknowledging this and communicating, because sometimes it does take a village. It would have been nice to have had alarm systems and catching it, but gratefully and thankfully, it was caught, communication happened, and I think as evidenced by the timeline of events, that, that action was very quick, and I think it could have avoided something that might have gone on for much longer. And so for that series of events, very grateful that that could have happened. Question that I had, if I could, we now have identified this risk in this tank, and we've seen this buckling, is there any thought or consideration for the other tanks to undergo a similar type of testing where we drain them and look to see if there might be any susceptible areas that could be potentially buckling that we might be able to notice in advance and do some, I, I appreciate the, the belt and suspenders approach that's duplicating, making sure we don't get caught again. But I would just ask if that might be a consideration. I know that at times there are costs, and certainly there are failure rates to be considered. Sometimes a failure rate of three tanks is one in a million, and that might have happened for us, but if that's a thought and a consideration, maybe we could explore that as well. Is it, I just wanted to clarify one thing, so we believe the total leak was 25,000 gallons, and I believe I know the answer, but we're not saying that we believe all 25,000 gallons flowed directly into the drain pipe and then directly into the pond. Is that a, a true statement? I just wanted to make sure I understood that, because I wasn't sure if, if more had come out and leaked and we were thinking only 25,000 gallons made it to the pond, or, but we believe the entirety of this particular leak was 25,000 gallons.
Yes, that's correct. The 25,000 was based on the reduced flow to the plant, so that's how the operator calculated that 25,000 gallon leak. We don't believe that 25,000 gallons made it in through those small leaks around the pipe connection or drain manhole only. We believe it discharged to the ground, and some of that went to Shovel Shop Pond. We can't quantify how much did, so that's why we've assumed, as Joe said, 25,000 gallons as a total SSO.
And when you say it's small leaks, that's because basically it's water penetrating via the looser connections of the drain system or the, the rainwater system that aren't designed to be watertight. Would you say that those looser connections are the size of a, a garden hose? Would you say that they're usually the size of a, of a pencil or the size of a straw? Or is there any context for?
Yeah, it's tough to quantify, but it's definitely not a garden hose. When we opened that cover, we saw a leak coming in about the width of a straw, but I didn't, I didn't quantify the gallons per minute, we didn't measure it, we knew we had an issue, we, we took action to stop it, and then the leak was stopped. So I'm not really interested in recreating that leak to measure it, but, but that's why.
It adds context.
Yeah, so.
To, to me, 25,000 gallons at once seems like a tidal wave.
Yeah, actually, we have an example.
This was not your manhole, but this is a photo of additional leaking drain manhole that we had on file, to get you a sense of when drain manholes leak, they are straw-sized, they weep's in through holes, it kind of just pees into the manhole, I'm using the wrong term there.
Yeah, that's kind of like a fountain you might see.
Yes.
That's kind of very similar, you know.
This is groundwater leaking into a drain manhole in a different community, but it gives you a sense of the, the order magnitude.
Understood.
It does add up, but it's not, when people, again, think of a 25,000 gallon per day sanitary sewer overflow, they envision a, a large pipe pouring sewage, and that's, that's not what occurred here.
Just to clarify, 25,000 gallons is a total volume that we're estimating leaked out of that tank, not 25,000 gallons per day of this event.
Correct. Correct. 25 gallons total.
Can you, one, one question. Can you talk to us a little bit more about our drinking water and how we can be assured that this did not impact the drinking water?
Yes, so Shovel Shop Pond and Queeser Brook are not sources of our drinking water. We, we get our drinking water from groundwater. The closest, we're in a zone two, which is the larger area which feeds groundwater to our wells. But the groundwater from the wastewater treatment plant area is about five years upstream of our wells. So that's five years that water would have to get into the groundwater and travel and be purified during that time. That's why we have, you know, our wells are where they are because we, it is clean water once it gets to our wells. The surface water itself is not what we drink. The surface water itself flows down Queeser Brook and eventually into Narragansett Bay. Only some, some surface water does go into groundwater during very dry times, but mostly in the wet times like we are now, that groundwater's recharging those streams in Queeser Brook and going further, oh, it's not becoming part of our drinking water.
Dave, just to clarify, so what that graph is showing, the red dot is the site where this leak occurred, and you were saying it takes approximately four to five years for some groundwater?
Yes, the groundwater.
Whether it was treated effluent, which is obviously what we are seeing almost all the time putting into the ground, or what would come out of a septic tank, it would take four to five years for it to travel to the nearest well.
Correct.
And during those four to five years, it is filtered naturally, and even if something of this untreated fluid did get there, the well has been treated, the water is treated.
Yes, our water is disinfected. We sample source water, and we provide treatment as well and disinfection to our water. So there is no public health issue as far as drinking water goes to what ended up in Shovel Shop Pond, whatever quantity that was, it does not impact our drinking water.
Chuck, let Chuck ask his question before.
Great. God, you just stole much of my thunder along with Connor in regard to my questions, which was more to Mr. Field because of the impact on the local community outside of the technical presentation. And I was unable to make the walkthrough this week because of a flat tire in Boston, but the, the other questions I had, which may lend to my inexperience on these matters, is they, the gray water, as it were, going into Shovel Shop Pond, it is, it is made up of, of the results of, 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 of test, testing on, in the tank for these items such as urine, laundry liquids, such as, now, what happened to the fecal matter? Is that treated the same way? That all came in too, but at that point, it's gray matter rather than partial fecal matter, or what?
As a wastewater engineer, I was hoping for a question like this. I pulled together this slide. As you go through wastewater treatment, there are various liquids along the way. There is raw sewage, which is what directly, in this case, it's all residential, so it is laundry soap, it is what goes to a toilet, because what, what goes down a kitchen sink. And it includes the solids that, if you see on the, on the leftmost container, raw sewage, there's a number of things on the bottom of that jar. Those are solids in your sewage. When that settles out in a primary tank, you end up with primary effluent, which means the solids have settled to the bottom and it started to, to clarify itself. What came out of the, the septic tank that leaked was this second container. It was primary effluent. There was no evidence of solids found along the way, with the sampling, I should say, or no evidence of solids at Shovel Shop Pond, or toilet paper or anything like of that matter. It had all been screened through the ground exactly as a septic system works. Your septic system is only the first two containers. Raw sewage comes into your septic tank, it settles out, the primary effluent overflows to your distribution field or leaching field or septic field, whatever term you want to use, and that's what goes directly into the ground. At the Northeastern Village Treatment Plant... directly into the ground. At the Northeastern Village Treatment Plant, we receive the raw sewage. What comes out of the tanks, one of which is the one in question, is primary effluent. At the treatment plant, that's split into the next two bottles, so primary effluent is treated into biological reaction, biological reactor fluid, or what we commonly called sludge. That sludge gets trucked away, pardon me, and you end up with a final effluent. So, the jar on the right is what comes out of the Northeastern Village wastewater treatment facility. So, the third one goes away as sludge in a truck. The second jar is what leaked out, and there were no solids as part of that, that is our belief. And then here, on your question, I'd actually add another bottle, and that is, the Northeastern Village wastewater treatment facility discharges into three groundwater recharge fields, so that very clean final effluent gets mixed up with groundwater. In many cases, that effluent is cleaner than the groundwater it gets mixed up with, with respect to nitrogen and ammonia and some of the components that you listed in your presentation, or in your question. So, the goal of this is to make sure that everybody knows the treatment plant can get to the fourth bottle, and this unfortunate situation, we only got, a portion of which only got to the second level of treatment, which is very similar to those septic systems that have yet to connect to the treatment plant of the sewer system. Do you add anything to that?
Yeah, no, I think that the concern, and maybe some confusion about the term gray water, what happened here was primary effluent leaked, and it didn't contain solids, rags, and paper that are very objectionable, that you usually see on a typical SSO. If you had a pump station that failed and overflowed, or a pipe blocked in the middle of the street, and something overflowed in the street, you get a little of everything in there. You get your raw sewage that includes all those things. This leak did not have those items. Doesn't change the fact that we had a leak, but it was basically primary effluent, which was similar to a septic system.
Okay, thank you.
I think that hopefully addresses your question, right?
Thank you, yes. The, the next question is, we, I can't come up with all of the exact numbers, but we had a standard of how much we, we should be below in order to be safe. We started this ungodly number at the, near the outfall of 2,400-something, and we got it below 235 in most, in all spots by, by using sodium hydrochloride and chlorine tablets. These are accepted ways of reducing that number, right? In other words, the, the cure is not worse than the illness, right? It's much better than, okay. So, but if the testing went down, if after doing that, the area went down to 191 or 152 at the spillway, is, what was it before the incident? I mean, 191 sounds good now. We're under the limit, but was it 130 before, 110 before? Do we have any way of knowing?
Yeah, so, so, surface water is very tricky to figure out that stuff. It really depends on what your antecedent conditions are. So, if you have a lot of rain, generally, your test, if we tested upstream and downstream, everywhere, you'd have a similar baseline, and it's going to change all the time. So, there's no, this is what Queeser Brook is. It changes on a daily basis. Depends how much runoff is going in from various sources. So, we treated, we tested in three spots, the wastewater treatment plant operator tested in three spots on that Friday after the leak. The, the high number at the outfall, then the midpoint on Shovel Shop Pond, and then at the spillway where the, where the water goes over the dam. And those all came back within swimming standards. And then, two weeks later, we also tested in Queeser Brook for total coliform, and those were also similar. So, I believe our baseline of Queeser Brook is around that, you know, 150 to 190 range anyway. And we confirmed that we did have some sewage at the outfall, and at the outfall is where they dosed it with some sodium hypochlorite to try to mitigate that elevated effect. But that's still not a huge number compared to what raw sewage typically is. Joe, would you have a typical number on?
For fecal and raw sewage, it could be tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands parts per hundred. So, we found 2,400, or tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands.
Thank you. Adam, chair?
Craig, did, I just wanted to give everyone, did you have anything?
I just have one. It's, I guess it's a simple question. How would you, how would you, this, this tank issue, how would, would you classify it as a, as a manufacturer problem or an installation problem? And, and where I'm heading with that is, would there be some sort of a, regardless of which one, would there be some sort of a warranty on it? That, basically, what I'm getting at is who's going to pay for this?
Okay, and I can, I can answer half of that question. We don't know whether it was a manufacturing defect or an installation defect yet, so both the manufacturer and the installer have been put on notice of the situation. They'll be kept apprised of what's going on, and we may be seeking assistance in both with respect to recommendations for repair. There is a, the town with the treatment plant and under the construction contract that you have, have had a one-year warranty for the treatment facility, which is standard for public construction in Massachusetts. So, right now, these tanks are not under warranty, yet both the manufacturer and the installer have been put on notice of this, and we intend to keep them apprised of what's going on as costs become available and as solutions, recommended solutions are finalized.
Yeah, but this is, this is more of a, I mean, if, if it wasn't installed properly, wouldn't that be more of a, a little outside of the range of like a typical warranty?
It would, it would. It's, for things that have been buried in the ground, it's a difficult burden to prove in proper installation. So, I can't commit to anything about that this evening, but with the structural report coming back, and the evaluations will be ongoing.
Are they being, indicating that they're being cooperative with this so far?
Well, they are. The, the manufacturer asked a few questions. The installer, actually, has been very cooperative and indicated he would call me tomorrow after this presentation. It's West Construction of Halifax.
And can you just talk a little bit about, or maybe this is a better question for you, Connor, about how costs are borne just for the regular ongoing operations and maintenance, or should this not be under warranty and the town has to pay for it? That's not going to impact the residents in that district. They're not going to get a bill for that.
No, we don't anticipate that there will be any appreciable impact on the sewer rate. So, by way of background, for a system, a sewer system or a water system, you have what's called an enterprise fund, where the ongoing operation and maintenance expenses of that system are borne by users only, and users pay a fee based on the volume of use. So, if you are in the sewer system and you are connected, you pay a rate of $15 per 1,000 gallons to the town for that sewer system. Those funds are used in the maintenance and upkeep, as well as to support capital improvements and repairs of a sewer system. So, at this time, we don't have any reason to think that whatever necessary repairs we need to take would have a significant impact or, or an impact on that rate.
Is there, is there any sort of a ballpark on what it would cost to replace one of those tanks, you know, as far as digging it up, tank replacement, get it back online?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think tank replacement would be necessary. There's, there's a lot of repairs that can be done, and the structural engineers were in the tank on Thursday, so we're still waiting those final reports to determine what the recommendations are. We have some ideas on what those are.
Some preliminary recommendations that were in this presentation, but at this time, it has not been indicated that they would recommend a complete replacement.
Sounds good.
I think we would.
Tom had a question earlier that, about whether or not the other two tanks should be looked at, or could be looked at in advance. I'm curious as to what, what that would look like and whether that could actually happen.
Yeah, we, we can look at that and see what, what it would take to, to inspect those. It's definitely something we can look at.
To be clear, though, at the time that the town became aware of a possible leak, and there was the visual inspection by the operator of this tank in question that was leaking, that was done by actually physically getting, looking inside of a tank. That was done for both other tanks at that time as well. They were inspected visually when the other was shut off to confirm that that was not the source, which is different than the more thorough, complete draining. I think the process was, somebody tied to a chain actually went into this other one, so that's something we can, the more detailed one is something we can look at.
Yeah, and as far as, these tanks are routinely pumped based on an annual basis. There is some confusion about, you know, why there's trucks there. We, we pumped the sludge from the plant, about 5,000 gallons every three or four weeks, and then yearly, we pump our pump stations to clean them of any grit and accumulated fats and oils and greases, and the same thing with these tanks. So, the next, the, the tanks were done this fall, so I think the next annual inspection would probably be a, a lower cost opportunity for us to make entry into the tanks and inspect those. There's no, I don't believe there's any immediate suspicion that there are any leaks in those tanks, but we can definitely do that in our next scheduled annual maintenance of those tanks.
I think that makes sense. I think it could, oh.
Are the two existing tanks sufficient to do the job that three were doing?
Yeah, the tank, this plant's designed for 50,000 gallons per day. Right now, we're just under 15,000 gallons per day, so having this offline doesn't hurt us operational. We have plenty of tankage for equalization. We want to get it back up and running, so we have options should anything else ever happen, but yeah, the, the plant is fine as is until we come up with a permanent solution.
I know, that's, no, not at all. It's a great question. This goes without saying, but any learning that we can have with this project and this issue that's happened, that we can apply to the future projects that the town faces, I know that we would do and apply, and I think it's just worth saying, I would ask that we maximize the regret, this regrettable incident to ensure we apply all of the benefit going forward. You did mention that we potentially could leverage, and I believe it's called SCADA, having gone through that tour, I know that's a software application that we use to monitor the system. Does that mean that we potentially may have a software-related ability to monitor for this lower levels within the tank? Is that what you were inferring when you made that statement?
Yes, the software is already in place. It would be a matter of the hardware and the wires connecting to the software.
Okay, potentially.
Potentially, yes.
So, they'd already be able to see that on that monitor, like the picture that he showed, they'd see the, the leak going down on that. He's just not alerted to it when it happens.
Correct, right.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation and for bringing us in to do the walkthrough. Something that I think was also worth sharing is the, the software that they use, and the operator, he can control things from his cell phone out in the field. He can open and close valves, he can see things, he can get alerts, and he's, there's a whole protocol that you shared with us when we were there as to the points of contact. There's, you know, redundancy, there's failovers, there's all these sustainability points of contact through that, so that was very reassuring also. So, we're going to open it up to the public if-
Can I ask one more question? I apologize.
Sure.
Just, I realized a note that I had not made. Our plant, in terms of, I understand that plants have different levels of treatment. Are, could you talk about that briefly, and then I have a follow-up question after that, if I could. What level of treatment does this plant do, and how does that compare to what some other plants might do?
Do you want to take that?
I'd love to take that, yeah. Anticipation is, there are different treatment plant outcomes. This slide just compares raw sewage coming into the Northeastern Village plant, and in this case, I had some records on the Rentham Village reuse system. For those of you who've been to Rentham Village, if you've gone into the restrooms there, that's treated wastewater that is being used to flush the toilets at Rentham Village. And the suspended solids, are those solids that you had asked about? And your plant, on average, drops the suspended solids from somewhere between 200 to 300 down to 3.7. Rentham Village, which is considered a step beyond your plant, it gets it down to three. For nitrogen, you can see the numbers, you get to 6.7 on average. Rentham Village goes to two. On fecal, your plant is actually treating fecal to a lower level than the Rentham Village currently is treating fecal. So, I have a few theories on that, if anybody would like to take a class. And then that biochemical oxygen demand term we used earlier, your plant gets down to 6.3, they get a little better. So, you are, you are not far off from the Rentham Village Treatment Plant. The Gillette Stadium Treatment Plant, it's the same technology as the Rentham Village Treatment Plant. When you go to the Gillette Stadium, your toilet flushing is also reuse water standards, so you treat to a very high standard, one of the highest in the state with respect to wastewater treatment.
I would just, I've heard from a lot of people who are very concerned about their water and the water that we drink and we use in the town. As I mentioned earlier, the community values greatly, you know, the, the natural resources that we have. I, I would just ask all of us, as we go forward, to continue to try to seek ways, that we strive to be the best that we can at treatment, and I know and believe that we do after going through this, and that we continue to be at the forefront of trying to be as aggressive as we can with the treatment that we have, given the important resource that it ultimately affects. So, I appreciate it. Thank you for that context that helps add a little bit of color for me. I appreciate that.
Any more questions from the board? You sure?
Thanks. Apologies.
We know the public has a lot of questions, so if you want to come up, state your name and address and ask your question.
I want to put together a thing that hucked out, but you have a question. Carol Nessler, 37 Mechanic Street. So, a couple of things before I start with my questions. Connor, can you just clarify what you just said about cost? So, let's just throw a number out there. Let's say the repair for the, the sewer is $50,000. Are you saying that the town picks up that cost, or it's part of the cost of the sewer treatment plant and basically fees?
Are you describing town in the sense of general fund versus?
Yes, operating budget as opposed to the enterprise fund.
Typically, if there was a, an expense to be bore for the ongoing maintenance or operation of a sewer plant, you would pay for that out of the enterprise.
So, ultimately, it is the people in the district who are going to pay for this repair, whether it's substantial or not, is what you're, at this point, you're saying you don't expect it to be substantial.
Districts, I can't modify it. It'd be the districts, the whole sewer.
Right, so.
Well, they, they pay, their payment is flat. It is based on their use. They're not going, it's, we don't anticipate, so, it's not as if there's going to be a surcharge on your bill.
No, but the rate may go up.
We don't anticipate, we don't think that that would hap, from $50,000, we wouldn't-
No, I'm not saying, I'm just saying that ultimately, it is paid for, whatever cost this ends up being, it is ultimately paid for by the people who are connected to the sewer district.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I do reiterate, though, that we don't anticipate that repair will change their rate.
I'm just, I'm just looking for clarity, because it sounded like you were saying, no, they weren't going to pay it at all, but that's-
Their, their use fees pay for a variety of things, including repairs and ongoing operation, yes.
Okay. And then, just to be clear, we had talked about the alarms and what was available in the sewer treatment plant. Again, this is just a point of clarity from something I heard discussed here. If somebody had been in the plant, would there have been something, a dial, a gauge, a report, something visually that if somebody looked at it, they would have said, hey, like, the level's going down in this tank, or is there nothing like that at the plant?
There is, there is no specific level monitoring in that one tank for, for in a slow leak. The plant operator, I believe, would have realized that the incoming flow was off the normal ranges.
So, if somebody had physically been there, kind of looking around, they might have said, hey, you know, we've, there's, so 25,000 gallons, that's two and a half days' worth of sewer, effectively, if we average 15,000 a day, that was gone. See, if somebody was there, we would have likely noticed that, do you think? As opposed to remote monitoring?
Yeah, so, the, there is also fluctuations on our flow. Monday's typically the low-flow day, and it can go down to as little as, you know, 3,000 to 6,000 gallons. So, I believe that's why on Monday, that wasn't picked up, because the flow was less than the plant. But yes, and the plant operator is in there two to three hours per day. It's just a matter of, it wasn't picked up on. There is no alarm right now to tell us that that had a low-level issue.
It's kind of a Murphy's Law moment.
So, he would have, when he looked at the, you know, trend logs of the flow, and I think on Tuesday, that would have been picked up, that flow is off.
Also, I just want some clarity. On the water testing report, where we have that first graphic with the big red number, the 2,000 number, that was collected on the 7th, is that right? December 7th, and the spill happened the first, second, third, somewhere in that time period. So, those numbers, was that after we treated the water with the?
No.
So, that was before? Okay. So, that, so, that was like worst-case scenario, but four days in, so probably, it was probably much, I don't know, much higher, but significantly higher the first couple of days?
I, I couldn't speak to that. Again, the strength of the sewage and how much actually got into the pond, we don't know, but the operator did test. Because of the, you know, the presence of the odor, he dosed the area after the test.
And did it, would it have continued, just so I understand? So- And did it, would it have continued, just so I understand? So because it was sort of in the groundwater and then getting into the storm drains, and we had a lot of rain, would have, even if they took the tank online, it would have continued for maybe a few days, like seeping? Do we know that?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So it wasn't like a big giant spill that happened all at once. It went into the ground, and then the ground gets saturated, I assume with 25,000 gallons, and then that kind of leaked into the storm drain?
The groundwater's been high at this time of year because of all the rain we've had. So I don't know exactly the, you know, how much groundwater and sewage got into the drain line, or whether it was all sewage going in through the stone bedding around the pipe. We really don't know. But what we do know is that, you know, we tested the pond, there was evidence of sewage, and that's, you know, that's why we took the actions we took.
So on the 7th, there still could have been some sewage getting in from the ground that was not part of the spill? I mean, part of the spill, but that was shut off?
I don't believe, we already had taken that tank offline.
Okay.
And pumped, pumped that tank. So on the 7th, there would be no more sewage in...
No more, no more leaking from the tank?
Exactly.
Whatever was there, was already there. Okay. Have we ever had any other spills in the district?
No.
And have we ever had a leaking tank before? I thought that...
This tank had an issue when it was first put online, and it was repaired at that time under warranty.
So we've had a leaky tank before? The exact same thing?
Not necessarily. I think it was when it was put online. It wasn't an SSO.
So, but it leaked? From the bottom? The same way it leaked now?
We don't know where it leaked from. The manufacturer in West Construction...
This was during, during the startup period when the tank was filled. It leaked. Contractors were here. Part of their obligation, as they were still working on it, was to repair that.
Okay.
As they would do during any of the construction.
But this, the very same tank that leaked, has leaked before?
Yes.
But it wasn't an SSO because we weren't online yet?
That is correct. It was not.
Okay. So, to, back to the, the area where the spill was, that amount of E. coli in the water must be fairly, I know everyone's saying it's not dangerous now, I get that. While that spill is in the water right there, if anybody was near that water, if dogs went to that water, if kids went into that water, I assume that would not be a very healthy situation? I mean, is it, when it's at 2,000 or whatever?
It's definitely higher E. coli than the, you know, the rest of the background level of the pond. But again, as far as being a health threat, I don't know. It's not that drastic compared, like, to the Charles River and other, other waterways like that.
Well, I just, I saw a statistic that I think I got off of the Mass website that said, like, the first 72 hours after a spill, I mean, there's risks of hepatitis and other kind of things. So I'm just curious. One of the things I didn't see in the next steps that I think would be really important is how we notify the community of what is going on in a situation like this. That area is, is highly recreational. People are over there all the time. People fish in that pond. If I'm not mistaken, Lang Water uses the water to, to irrigate. And yet, nobody had any information or was told anything about the spill at the time it happened, even to the point to, you know, don't play here if you've got kids. Don't let your dog go swim in that water. I just, really, as somebody who lives in that area and is out there all the time and sees the number of people out there, I really think there needs to be a system that's put into place, even though you don't have all the information that says, you know, we've had a spill. And, you know, you may not, this area is not probably safe to let your little kids play in, or something, so that people know what's going on. And then, sort of, level of expectation. As the person who, you know, sent the email in when I found this, I've walked by the pond every single day for the last three weeks, and I have no idea. Like, I'm looking, I'm like, is this another problem? So it would have been nice to say, look, we put some sulfur in here, it's going to turn orange, or just something to let people in the area know, because we're all speculating now. And that's usually far worse than the actual facts. So if we had sort of a way to get the information out there, I think that would be very helpful. That's my last comment.
Well, Carol, I think that brings up a good point. We had talked about that, you know, after, after making sure that this is resolved internally, talking about ways to improve the process. And that is one of the things we were looking at.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dale Terrister. I have three questions. First, is there any reason not to implement the changes in your monitoring and alarm system to monitor for the low level, given that there was a leak and there was a history with the tank? You mentioned before that it was under consideration, but is there any reason not to do so?
I don't believe so. That would be part of the capital recommendation in that there's some additional electrical equipment and wiring associated with it.
So is it over and above the software change that would need to be made? There is some equipment that would need to be done?
Correct.
Okay.
We'd want to make sure that recommendation would be, would be of value to the community.
So that's a decision that the town would make in terms of equipment out there? Okay. Second question was, was there anything with, that the inspection revealed to suggest that the circumstances with respect to the leak from this one tank was unique to that one tank, and would not have been a similar weather manufacturing or installation issue for the other two? In other words, is there any reason to suggest this only would have been a problem associated with this one tank as opposed to something that might have been common, and therefore that might arise with respect to the remaining two tanks?
I wish I were the structural engineer who had gone into the tank to be able to answer that. And I don't, I can't answer that, quite honestly. I would actually like you to repeat that so I can make sure that's part of the report, the specific answer.
Right. So the question again was whether there was something that was, as a result of the inspection, that suggested that the problem was unique to that one tank? For example, that the manner of construction was different for that one tank as opposed to the other two? In other words, one would think that if there was a problem that arose with this one tank, and it was the same manufacturer and same installation, installation methods for the remaining two, that it would suggest that the other two are at risk. And therefore, that that would govern the decision of what, if anything, to do about the remaining two going forward?
Yeah. I have to confirm this, but I believe that that was a different, a different location. The manufacturer, manufactured the other two, a different location. I'll have to confirm that with engineers. Am I correct, Jack? Yeah. So that, those other two tanks were manufactured in a different location. And so I think that's one of the reasons why, once we identified this tank, we, it was clear that that was the issue.
Third question is, has Town Council been notified and/or with their plans to notify Town Council about potential claims and a particular implication of statute's limitations and statute of repose? I don't know when this was built, but it would seem that the town ought to be considering conferring with Town Council about what the potential claims might be with respect to either the manufacturer on a tort basis, or also the, with respect to the installation, and/or as to the repair efforts that were engaged in. For example, if those were negligent in connection with rectifying the issues. And statute of repose is a hard deadline. I don't know if, how it applies in these public construction projects, but it seems like Town Council ought to be involved in considering what the potential claims are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
Beth Kenny, 34 William Street. Connor, I just have a question to understand the enterprise fund. I understand how they work. I know the water department does a really great job. We get billed for our water. There's an enterprise fund. They are accountable for all their expenses. And then, there either is extra money or not, you know, and it balances every year. So since the sewer systems have begun, and I'm only familiar with the Northeastern Village, one that started five years ago or so, I've never really understood how the town is accounting for it as an enterprise fund publicly. I've been to whatever those meetings are, where the water department guy gets up and tells us what's happened for the year and what the budget is. But it's, can you explain to me where, what's happened? I'd like to see, number-wise, I'm interested in what's happening for education and moving forward. So, you know, as we're building these sewer systems, we really understand how they're being paid for, what they cost. And years ago, it seemed the answer was that, is Wendy the town accountant still?
Correct.
Like Wendy was managing it. But it didn't seem like very detailed. So I know you guys are the sewer board, so who's, who's in charge?
Sure. So it's a good question. And first and foremost, the sewer enterprise fund is detailed and in the same level of detail as our water enterprise fund in the town's budget. And that is reviewed through our annual budget process every year with the selectmen, with the finance committee, for a reason why it's not necessarily as, maybe it doesn't stick out as much as, so the water division, we have Jack Marsh, Operations Director.
Correct.
Our water system dwarfs our sewer system, both financially and in its actual size. So the water division is significantly larger and has full-time staff, including a manager. So that's why that's kind of more publicly visible. But the sewer enterprise budget is spoken to by the finance director and is publicly accounted for exactly as we would account for our solid waste enterprise or our water enterprise. So we don't have a sewer operations director, so we don't have one person whose sole hat it is to kind of speak to that publicly. But it is part of, and subject to the same scrutiny as any budget in the town every year.
Yes.
And you had a second part of that, that was a good question, about kind of, how do we know how this is kind of working financially as more of these projects come online? Part of our responsibility, part of water incurrence responsibility to the town, is to support the drafting of what's called, I believe, a financial sustainability report that needs to be submitted to the Department of Environmental Protection and the state for them to look at what our sewer capital expenses are going to be, as far as what our sewer development plans are, how we are collecting revenues for our enterprise fund, and whether or not that is sustainable and makes us eligible for what are called state revolving funds from the state to build those projects, which we have been in compliance with.
And since we have three sewer districts now, we have the Village, Northeastern Village, and Queesit, and then eventually we'll be hooking up to Mansfield, partially, we already are. Is this, is that all one enterprise fund, or are they all individual systems?
Those are individual systems from an infrastructure standpoint, but it is one sewer enterprise fund, and it's the same use rate.
It will be the same use rate?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. It's, point of clarification, Northeastern is the only one that is operating and on, so those are the only folks who are paying that rate?
Avalon is actually paying, they pay 25,000 gallons per day. They actually have a bigger use than Northeastern Village.
Avalon is connected to Mansfield as part of a first phase of Five Corners. Thank you for correcting me.
And do you foresee that with, with it expanding, that now we'll have three districts? Do you foresee that rate, because we'll have more people going on going down, or not for quite a long time, because it's still pretty miniscule as compared to like a city of Rockton, for instance?
I mean, ideally, we'd like to achieve those economies of scale and bring it down, but I, it wouldn't be appropriate for me to promise that now.
And thanks for indulging me so I can understand. And so when there's repairs, when there's repairs to any of these different systems, that, you know, because you're, hopefully you have extra money in this account that are going to help to, things break, you know? We all have to have money to fix things that break, and the rate will go up and down. So these, the whole sewer district will be paying for the three, you know, it'll be spread amongst the rate. So everybody's really paying, not just what, eventually?
All the rate payers are...
All the rate payers are paying.
Sure.
Okay.
Just like the water...
Right, just like if you live on...
Just because of the water main break on one side of town doesn't mean, you know, it's not going to affect people's rates differently. Water's looked at it as a whole town, same thing with sewer.
Okay. And so, one more quick question. So if I looked at, if I was interested and I wanted to look at just like how the Village, you know, how it's working so far, is there detail there that says, for this year, we took in such-and-such dollar amount revenue, and our maintenance for that plant is X, and we have this much left over, something like that?
Yeah, I believe that you would see the total annual revenue, as well as what the budgeted expenditures were and for what. That's in our annual budget book, which is admittedly very large and can be cumbersome, but that's available online. If you would like, I can email you the link. If you can't find it, I can help you, but it is...
You can find it, yeah.
Okay. It's in the annual budget book, and that will show you the...
Page 67 of the 2009...
And then they, and then they also factor into the sewer rate, having, how do you come up with the sewer rate? I mean, I know it came up in the beginning, but are you factoring in extra dollars for, like, an escrow repair thing?
That's actually part of the fiscal sustainability plan that we're required to have. And that's, we have to build a budget for future replacement and repair of all of our assets.
Is that like a law from the state? Like, or is that like town, like...
No, it's best practice, and to be eligible for certain state revolving fund loans, we have to be able to do that and prove that. So that's one of the things we have to budget for, especially as we grow our system.
Okay. And one more technical question. So you have these three holding, they're called holding tanks, right? You have these three tanks. So everything's coming in, goes into these tanks. Stuff happens, so it goes to the big plant, keep the solids there, and the water goes out, pretty much, right?
Very well said.
So what would have happened if we were at, like, I forget what the capacity is per day or whatever? I mean, because we're way low capacity, below capacity, this would have been a lot worse, because there would have been a lot more water in the tank? Or is it relative to the size of the tank anyway? So, so like, what if...
Almost a proxy to the rainwater question that came up earlier, you treat the wastewater faster?
Okay.
When rainwater comes in, it's relatively clean water, so you can treat it faster without being at risk of any problems. So you would, you manage your flow. If you're getting more flow, then you manage that along the way.
I didn't mean rainwater. I meant if there were more people hooked up, and there was a lot more sewage coming in per day compared to what we're doing, because we're only doing 15?
Yeah. I mean, the plant is rated for 50,000, but the average, average flow when this plant, when everyone's hooked up, is going to be around 25,000 to 27,000 gallons. So we're not that low. We still have, you know, around 15,000 gallons per day. It's, you know, having a tank offline, it wouldn't, probably the operator wouldn't like it, because he, doesn't give him a lot of flexibility in his operations. But it's something we could still sustain.
Okay. And just from my knowledge, as I live in the area, can you tell me what the percentage of hookups have been in the Village?
I'm sorry, I don't have that number offhand, so I don't want to speculate it, but...
Half the people? More than, less than half? Nobody knows?
I don't have that number. I think it's in the annual report, actually, on maybe on page 67. It actually show how many...
Budget line items, but I can look.
The, the budget narrative actually had the amount of connections we had, I think, last year. But I don't have that offhand.
And our, and then other two sewer districts, are hookups mandatory or optional? They're only mandatory if you fail or you need a new system?
Right, that's...
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep. That's Title V.
Thank you very much.
Good questions. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Oh, nobody else?
Amy McMahon is 51 William Street. I'm sorry, I missed the presentation. I was working late. But I wanted to just clarify a couple of things. So from what I heard, there were, that this tank that had problems, had problems at the time of installation. The same tank?
Correct.
And at any time, was anybody concerned about that? Maybe make sure that the manufacturer put a new tank instead of taking one that had a defect?
Yes. The manufacturer had to install repairs and retest the tank to affirm that the repairs were...
Because it was a very expensive system. I just was curious if it was ever discussed at the time, if there was a problem with that particular tank, instead of repairing it, just replacing it, putting a new tank?
I don't know if discussions of replacing the tank were, were had at the time. But the repairs were definitely discussed at the time and required.
The other question that I have about the system itself is, so it's out of warranty right now?
Correct.
At the time that you were putting in the system, was the technology upgrade available? Was that something, because you had talked about the, the software being available, but the hardware or the wiring is what's missing, and that's why there wasn't this software sort of notification that there was a problem? Is that right?
Not, not exactly. The, the software is, was available. We feel it's a state-of-the-art software.
Mm-hmm.
These tanks, as an industry standard, are not monitored for slow leaks. So I don't, none of our other treatment plants monitor for it. We certainly will be using this as a lesson learned to evaluate.
Why would that, why would that be, that you wouldn't monitor something for slow leaks? Is it because you're, the assumption is that it's going to dissipate and not really impact the water supply?
No, the assumption is that it will not leak, and that you are monitoring it for overflows only?
Yep.
Because it is purely an equalization tank. So we, we monitor the high level.
But if the tank leaked from the get-go, wouldn't it have made sense at that time to have a monitoring system in place so that it would actually have caught it before it did leak? I know if it's not...
Five years later, in hindsight, sitting here tonight, I would agree with that. But yes, but the, the, it has not been a standard. That's why we're recommending now it be considered.
Is that going to be the standard for the future? Is that going to be the standard for the future systems that are being put in place up at Five Corners?
We're not building treatment plants.
Oh, that's right, so it's just going? So this is just the only one that's going to be in Easton?
Yeah, I mean, concrete, concrete tanks and manholes are water-tested and vacuum-tested for watertightness on all sewer systems. You don't usually see a tank like this leak. It's a very unusual circumstance, and that's why level monitoring for low level was not implemented, because it's something that generally doesn't happen.
But we are planning to do it now?
It's an option that we're going to look at.
Okay. And then just my last question, because I've been concerned from, for years about the pond, that's my main concern, for all the threats to the pond, and I, now that this has happened, this is just another threat to that pond. And I had called the water department, emailed the water department, rather, and asked a few questions about the danger to the Zone Two, you know, to the water supply, to the Zone Two wellhead, and I've been told by Jack Martian, others, that it's not a concern. So I just want to kind of confirm that that's the case, that this location of this sewage plant and the potential for it to actually leak, which it did, so the potential is there, that that is not any sort of a threat to the Zone Two wellhead? It's not a threat to the water supply to have that situation?
No, so this is, the wastewater treatment plant at this location is a benefit, it treats five million gallons of sewage a year. What happened in this case, all are unfortunate, we don't, we're not happy about it, we had primary effluent leak, it's basically like a septic system. So for, you know, two to three days, we had about 25,000 gallons of, of septic system discharge that was basically like it was before this treatment plant went online. But every year, we treat five million gallons to a higher standard than the existing baseline water conditions around the pond. So this is a benefit to the town and a benefit to the pond.
Why is it an advantage that it's located right next to the pond?
We treat the existing, we treat the existing septic system discharge that would have been going into, into the groundwater directly as primary effluent, we treat that to a high tertiary standard. We, very clean effluent.
The fact that it's right next to a pond, is that sort of, any sort of advantage, that it's next to the pond?
It's not an advantage or a disadvantage, we're not in a, usually the biggest issues have near water bodies, or if you're in the floodplain, and that can be a hazard to operate your plant during, you know, extreme flood events. This is a pond that's intercepting, the wastewater treatment plant and collection system is intercepting water that's basically making its way to the pond before it gets treated. Now we're taking that and we're treating it to a higher level than it was before.
From the shovel shops and from the Main Street.
And all around Pond Street and everything else that went into that area.
Even the individual septic systems that are in that area, okay.
Yeah, the ones that have connected. Now, the ones that aren't connected, they're still in that same, same condition of primary effluent, but the more people connect, the more we'll have a better treatment system and a, and a better condition for the groundwater in the future.
I mean, I understand everything that you're saying, but the fact that it's right next to the shovel shop pond, which is in the Zone Two wellhead, I don't think that's a great location for this. Also, the storm, the way the storm drains come in right at that, what do they call it? The sluice way? It's, that, if anything happens, if anything malfunctions in that area, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know, maybe I should just put it in the form of the question. Isn't that like a valley, that sluice way, where if anything happens that goes awry in that whole entire area, it's going to end up in that sluice way? Isn't it going to end up in that pond?
Just like failing septic systems did before they connected, they ended up in the pond.
Well, there's a lot more to be concerned about than just failing septic systems, because it's, there's more happening on Main Street, gas stations and things like that, so.
We can't change that condition, the one thing we can change is providing good treatment for the existing wastewater in that area.
All right, did you want to say something? You look like you want to say something.
David handled it articulately, but there's, instead of five million gallons of that second bottle going in next to the pond, there's five billion, five million gallons of that final bottle on the right going into the pond, I do, I do feel that's a benefit.
Thank you, Amy. And I just don't want to mislead, I apologize, in the official town budget document that can be found in fiscal year 2019 folder, the Town Administrator's Fiscal Year 2019 Balanced Budget PDF, it's page 191, so don't look for sixty-seven. And on it, page 190, is a summary of the Sewer Division Enterprise Fund, and there were thirty-four parcels connected to the town sewer, representing 154 services in 2017, and treated 5.2 million gallons of wastewater.
Thank you.
Mrs. Keach, you have a question?
Arlene Keach, Chestnut Street. I still haven't gotten an answer as to why all of the abutters, when we had this leaking in during the initial, and finally when it was tested, why weren't all of the abutters notified? We were lucky the time of year it was, but people walk that area, that's like a public walk area with their dogs, this time of year, they're not in there, I don't know, do you fish this time of year? But why weren't the abutters notified? Why weren't their signs put all along that public area? The trustees of the reservation, NRT, the ponds, the abutters who have dogs, why weren't they notified? And how is this, what's going to happen now? We're going to have sewer up in our area, we're going to have pipes above ground, I believe the pipes go above ground, is that correct? In front of new pond, in front of old pond, they don't go underground, correct?
They do.
They do?
They are married.
Okay, well, maybe that's good, so. I want to know in the future, if, you know, if we have a leak up there, how is the town going to handle it? How is the health going to be taken care of?
So to thank you for the feedback, there's two pieces to that. One, as far as abutter notification, the question came up from Mr. Mills, who was notified and why? The state regulations require that we notify the DEP, the EPA, and the Board of Health. It is not a requirement that there's some sort of a butter notification for an SSO. We're not happy it happened, it's unfortunate, however.
You're not happy that the leak happened, or you're not happy that all of the abutters, who have pets, going in and drinking?
Well, to be clear.
We can't qualify for the wildlife, but, you know.
To be clear, at the, at the site of treatment at the drainage, there was a higher than acceptable level of E. coli, but for the pond, where it was tested in the middle of the pond and near the lagoon, it was below standard levels.
But it was still in there. I mean, let's, we're going to say 25,000 gallons were in there, and you knew where it went in, so you knew it was going to be high there, and you tested over on the right, and you tested on the left, but it was still in there, you knew it was there.
There, there.
You could have done 25 tests regardless. Why weren't the abutters notified?
So.
The state said?
If I may.
All right, I'll shut up.
The first part of that is, it's not required, but as Dottie had said, we will look at, this is the first SSO we've had, sewer is relatively new to Easton, and we'll look at our own internal process and notification process and see how we could do a better job.
I guess that's the best we can do. It's not good, I mean, it's not good.
I think to be clear, no one on this board was happy with this situation at all either.
Then why didn't you step up and notify the abutters, the people who have the dogs? Put a sign up, this water is not safe to drink, keep your pet away.
That is something that we're going to review afterwards and come up with a better protocol for it. So like we, like you said, this was the first time, there's a lot of lessons to be learned, and there's, there's a lot of room for improvement, so we will take a look at that.
I hope it happens soon.
Thank you, Dale Karister, 21 South Street. I'm just following up on Arlene was doing, in light of the fact that there are additional sewer districts that are coming on board, I think folks in the town would take a lot of comfort if there was a more systematic program put in place for notification, which I presume would come from the Board of Health, that if the Board of Health is notified about this, that institute some process so that residents can make their own evaluation, the determinations, based on whatever data is coming in. There is a real concern from a lot of people that they were not aware of it, and there hasn't been a lot of disclosure, information about what's going on, and in light of the other projects that will be coming on board, I think it would behoove the town to put in some formal system so that when you are putting these new systems on place, and for the benefit of the residents of the existing systems, that they know there is a protocol in place for notification of, not only the immediate abutters, because others may be coming in as well, of folks who may be impacted by events like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope, okay. Thank you very much for coming in with that, and we look forward to seeing your final report.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
And thank you, James.
So next up, we have a proposed contract award with Liberty Chevrolet for the Department of Public Works utility truck with a plow.
You can sneak out if you want, Joe, I got a contract here, so.
Yes, so there's a, do you want to take us through this one?
Sure, we have a proposed contract for Liberty Chevrolet in the amount of $52,883, that's right?
Do you want to?
This is going to be purchased off the Plymouth County Commissioner's bid list, and we're, we're going with a Chevy in this, this time, where normally we've gone with Fords, this is really an effort just to see what the performance of the Chevys are compared to Fords. We have a mixed fleet anyway, we have Max, Sterlings, Peterbilt, Ford, Chevy right now, so having a different type of truck isn't, you know, unusual, and we also don't stock a lot of parts in-house, we, we basically call a company and they run a part out the day of or the next day, so it's not a big issue going with a Chevrolet, but that's why we are going Chevrolet in this case.
Okay.
It's going to be Jake and Seaton's truck?
It's going to be the highway supervisor, correct.
Any questions from the board? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to award the contract with Liberty Chevrolet for the Department of Public Works utility truck with a plow, not to exceed $55,000?
So moved, second?
All in favor? Unanimous.
Is that King and Barker?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it was.
Thank you.
And last, Southeastern Regional Services Group, SIRC, contract award for Department of Public Works Services.
Well, I'll stay here, but I think, Connor, you want to speak to that?
Uh, sure, actually, I'm reading this in detail, I think there might be a type of, so these contracts were already voted to be awarded by the board in 2000, December of 2018. The award sheet needs to be voted, although you had already voted to award it, the board does need to vote the award sheet itself, which I believe is attached.
Just a question, SIRC's board directors voted in December.
Sorry, I misread that.
Before the individual board of selection.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So we want to make a motion to approve the, the executed award sheet, is that the correct?
Yes, and I apologize, it looks like that's not bookmarked, it's page thirty-four of your packet, for DPW Services Award for February 1st, 2019 through the end of January 2020.
Okay. So would I, could I get a motion in a second?
So moved, second? Go ahead.
Tom and Chuck, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, David.
Next, we have general minutes dated November 5th and December 17th. Does anybody have any comments or questions on those?
If you're not.
Would somebody like to make a motion to accept both sets of minutes?
So moved, second?
So it's Craig and Tom, all in favor? Unanimous. Public participation? Town administrator notes?
Hi, Tom.
Michael, did you have anything for town administrator notes this week? Selectments notes? We attended an Eagle Scout ceremony this weekend, which was very nice, and the scout project was a scout that went through and identified markers and put markers on veterans' graves in town, which was a really great project, the veterans were very grateful, and the town is very grateful. Apparently, he discovered some graves that weren't in the database from the Revolutionary War, I believe, so, very good. And press notes, she's, nope, so, motion to adjourn.
So moved, second?
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everyone.